I'm breaking, so. I know that everyone's been invited. I'm going. It would be great. I'm not saying. Okay. Dr.
Two quick things. I'd really like to ask that we have appointments to committees scheduled for early January. We've lost the schedule on that. And secondly, I was sorry none of you could attend the discussion about the library that was yesterday that we enjoyed. I would really like to have this presented to council because I think there, you know, I've been, Paul obviously has been living with it. I've been involved, but I think an awful lot of you don't understand what's happening, what the pricing and the payment schedule and the contributions are for this and what this is going to be. And I just think it'd be a good idea for us to know about that. Well, I talked with Paul about this yesterday. I think maybe you wanted to wait until the public campaign starts, but anyway, I just...
Actually, until, we're going to be out on the street with a bid here pretty soon. And once we get the bids in, so we know exactly what this thing's going to cost, then maybe come right in here and...
But I really think that, I mean, am I correct? A lot of you are not, have not had...
It's a spectacular...
...any kind of presentation? Is that right?
No.
No, we had the full presentation.
So, and so you know the whole thing on the fee schedule?
No, we haven't had fees yet.
Well, not fees, but I mean, the budgetary...
I was at the meeting before this last one yesterday. I think I've been at two, but...
We had the architects.
Yeah. Yeah. That one.
We got that.
Is this different than that one, Terry?
No, just a little more expanded.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Anthony. I would just say that I got the email or Tommy responded to the manager or asked him if he had heard anything about the someone being stabbed at Cedar Grove. I didn't know if we had gotten anything back on that.
Yeah. Ann is not in. Ann. Ann. Quick update on Cedar Grove.
Okay.
Quick.
Quick. On December the 8th, two individuals were involved in a fight, one of whom stabbed the other in the abdomen. The police went to the scene. The person who did the stabbing has been arrested. The person who was stabbed actually went to the 7-Eleven, and the police found him there and took him to the hospital. Person who's done the stabbing has been charged. But I want to tell you a little bit about what the, what's happening with security at Cedar Grove. For the last month, HRT has had a supervisor there for 24 hours a day for seven days a week. HRT has, we've been ramping up over time the security at Cedar Grove, which is a good thing because it's dark now and we get into winter. But they've been ramping up since September. HRT has employed extra duty officers who work part-time for HRT, but they are police officers. And they're, they're working eight hours a day. Now, there may be two different officers or three different officers, but they're there for eight hours a day from 11:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. And they're there at that time because that's where most of the activity takes place. That's when the arrests have taken place that have taken place there. And they are watching what's going on. If there is a incident at one of our other centers, they go through one of our other centers, like the Wood's Corners Center, but most, but they've been staying at Cedar Grove eight hours a day now. In November, there was what they call a bus sweep. It's a four-hour sweep where the officers are undercover and looking through, seeing what's going on. That resulted in three persons being banned from HRT property. One was arrested for possession of marijuana with the intent to escape, and one was for parole violation. When officers are banned from that site, the police are developing the system, implementing a system where they can easily see what, who has been banned from the site and identify them on the sites and, you know, come back on the site. There is a, Department of Homeland Security has sent resources in the past to Cedar Grove. They're part of their visible intermodal protection response program, which stresses the high visibility of law enforcement at mass transit locations. And they will be having another operation there in the future. We, the Norfolk Police, also monitor what's been on at Cedar Grove out of the First Patrol Gold Sector and the Third Patrol Division. So they, officers flow through that section or through Cedar Grove, so they are augmented as there. Of course, they respond to any requests for service that come. Most of the activities there have been, that the police have been catching, have been some fighting, like the incident on December the 8th, urinating in public, disorderly conduct, drinking, possession of marijuana, and persons selling merchandise cannibalizing. And the police, of course, do arrest people when they find them.
With all of that, with all of that data, what does that tell us, Ann? I mean, I know that's another conversation, but I want you to tell us something.
That tells us that we are having meetings, looking for a place to locate it. Moving to another location. We have several different sites that are, that are underway. We have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM with multiple people from the Department of the City, HRT, to actually, we actually have about maybe six sites that we're looking at. And we have to look, of course, to see what's good for people, pedestrians, safety, getting the buses in and out, access, distance to and from places that people will want to be going and get put out in the middle of the area. So that's what it's, that's where we're moving ahead on trying to do that.
Thank you.
When you say ramping up security...
Yes.
What do, what accessory, what did they have and what have they added?
Can we get into that maybe after, after we, we're going to go into a closed session here, and we can come back.
Okay.
You know, this would include, obviously, a dignified building where people felt like they were appreciated and were going on buses and all of that stuff, so.
I didn't, I didn't expect to do that in depth in that report. Appreciate that, though. But the only other thing I would say is that, you know, one of the things I've talked about at this table is that, you know, with, with limited resources to do all the things that we need to do, I would hope that we would consider that naming rights are still on the table.
Yes.
For example, we're going to build this passenger rail station, if you will, downtown. Again, that's our front door. Again, people, whether it be the cruise ship terminal or passenger rail, where people are coming into Norfolk and getting a chance to, you know, just to get a bang for our buck in terms of us building it opposed to taking other dollars, private dollars, and helping us build a, a nice facility that we would, we would actually look into that before we get too far out of the road. I just think that, with all the things that we're doing, we could take advantage of a lot of opportunities that we've in the past that have an opportunity to do.
I still think Target would be a great sponsor for the scope, and they could paint a giant Target on the scope, and you could see it from the airplane.
I'm good.
It just, you know, the Alvin Robbins situation is still bothering me. When he came to us and told us what happened, and I think some of us had talked about that we need some kind of training and, or committee of citizens to talk about sensitivity and how we handle our citizens, primarily African-American citizens. But I'm just wondering, when we've reached a point where we were obviously wrong in this situation...
Well, you're reading the opinion pilot. What failed to report is that we elected to not prosecute him, and so that I had prosecuted review the case and the disorderly charge and the failure of the ID card. Prosecutions that could have been made. It was a matter to be tried, and we determined from many of the things that you're saying that in the long interest of justice, it wasn't necessary to go forward with prosecution of Mr. Robinson. So we excused the police officers. So that there were no police officers there. We asked Judge Zern to null-process the charge. He got outraged that we dismissed the officers and said, "No, I'm dismissing the case that you don't have any evidence here, and I'm quitting Mr. Robinson." And so that if you just read that there was a trial and the police officers didn't have a point, that was not entirely accurate. I, I take your point, but that I don't know that you know that there was never a trial and that we exercised prosecutorial discretion and did not proceed amid a motion to null-process it. But I reviewed the case, and it was a triable issue. So the police officers were not perfect, but that they were also not 100% without basis. So I'm sorry, I didn't think you knew that, and so I interrupted you.
Okay. Well, like I was saying, when we're wrong in a situation like this, I think that we should, I think we need to do more, and it's a, it's an issue that comes up all the time. We just, we have to do something about this. There's, there's issues there. I'm sorry, I think we were wrong in the situation. I just...
Well, we, I mean, I asked maybe three months ago, you know, to have somebody come talk to us about sensitivity training or what was going to happen because we repeatedly see this profiling or whatever you want to call it. And obviously, sometimes it may not be appropriate, but we see it so often that it might be well for us to have some kind of report to council.
Yeah, we, maybe we reported it at the committee level. But you may recall, we have a grant that may be 3/4 of a million dollars in which we have two individuals, well, we have four individuals who are doing enhanced community policing, but two individuals throughout the entire city that are doing exactly what everybody's talking about at the table to make sure that there's a sensitivity when a police officer is interacting with somebody in the community. So those individuals aren't on board yet, but we do have the grant. We do have the money. We actively recruit them for this, for that purpose.
You know, in, was it 2011 going into 2012, anybody who's not sensitive shouldn't be on our force. If they're not sensitive to race, if they're not sensitive to gender, then they don't be, need to be on the police force. You know, years ago, in the, in the late 60s, this is when sensitivity training was popular and important. But since 2012, sometimes you've just got insensitive officers out there who really don't, don't really care. They're the ones who we get reports from, from our citizens who come down that Dr. Whibley and Tommy are talking about. So if you have somebody out there on the street in 2011, 2012 that needs sensitivity training, I think you got the wrong person out there.
And I might, I just want to finish with, my concern with it is that we do have so many great police officers that are doing what they're supposed to do.
I agree.
And when situations like this happen, they get put in a lump of people that are not doing their jobs responsible, and I hate to see that. And I don't think that we hold some people accountable like we should in disciplining them when they do things like this. Whether it's wrong or right by the law, legal standards, I believe that it was wrong. And we, most of us know, Alvin, that he's not a bad guy, and I think that there was some aggression there that got out of hand.
And I don't know whether you say the good or the bad part about, but both of the officers were African-Americans.
And I haven't watched the video yet, but apparently it's posted online now.
Okay. We, we ought to schedule some time because, I mean, just one guy down here, I think there's more to the story than...
Every doctor.
What's been said tonight. Okay. We're ready to go into closed session.
One of the members of council will assemble in closed meeting on December 13th, 2011, at 5:30 PM. The 10th floor conference room for the purple setup.
a performance-based grant, and Chuck Ritten will do the presentation.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm very pleased to be able to pull up. Can we pull up the... Last one there? Yes. Yeah, that's it. There we go. Tonight, we're talking about the opportunity to bring an Urban Outfitters store onto Granby Street. It's really terrific news. We have been working with 265 Granby LLC, which is looking at putting in Urban Outfitters into 269, 271 Granby Street, which is the AA Adams Building. I'm going to run through this, by this, through this pretty quickly. I want to talk about basically, very quickly. I think everybody recognizes that what we've been trying to do on Granby Street is to bring new vitality and energy. Several years back, we had begun to the process of bringing back life onto Granby Street, as is normally the case in Main Street retail. You have the bars and restaurants that normally come in. We brought in residential. And now the transition, the opportunity to bring in a clothing goods retailer with the caliber of international repute as Urban Outfitters, has presented itself as an opportunity for us, and we've been working with the Downtown Norfolk Council and the 265 Granby folks to bring that about. We really do think it's going to be a real catalyst for additional development. It's really going to bring additional pedestrian traffic into the Granby District border. Think about the number of people that would be coming to this store, parking in our garages, coming across and through and down and around Granby Street. It really is a, an exciting new opportunity for us, and it is part of our overall strategy in terms of based on reliable market analysis, the last being a study that was commissioned by the Downtown Norfolk Council that spoke to the need for just this kind of retail. Again, that's a 2009 study. I think basically what it says is that we want businesses unique to the area. This will be the only Urban Outfitters in the Hampton Roads region, closest being in Richmond, also in Charlottesville, and in Tyson's Corner. There's only 176 Urban Outfitters in Europe and the North American area. They are very selective in where they go. Chains that are unique, obviously. You're going to bring several different themes that will want to co-tenant with an Urban Outfitters-type opportunity. And there is a terrific Market Street connector from Granby to the MacArthur Center. If you look out the Port Cachere, the main entrance of MacArthur Center, and look straight down the street, what you will see is the Urban Outfitters. And if you look backwards from Urban Outfitters, you're looking straight up into the front entrance of MacArthur Center. And by the way, MacArthur Center has been more than generous in, in saying that this is a complementary use to MacArthur Center. These guys don't fit into that kind of a profile. They want to be outside. They want to be in historic-type structures, and that's what we have with the AA Adams Building. We use performance-based grants, and the last one we used was in 2007, but these are performance grants that are available citywide. This is not a unique-to-downtown type of grant, but it is a, a grant that is used for a catalyst opportunity where it promotes change. And obviously, what we're talking about here is the redevelopment of older commercial orders such as Granby Street. It facilitates economic renewal. It has to be recommended based on four criteria, and actually, there's five. We want to expand the city's tax and investment base. We want it to be a job generator. We want it to promote incremental existing business growth, and we have to know that the project would not occur if not for some assistance on the front part of the deal. And here is something else that we look at. It has to have a 10-year business pro forma that would pass the test of any financial institution that might take a look at it. With those criteria in place, it can be considered for a performance-based grant. And what we're talking about specifically here for 265 Granby LLC, obviously, to be able to do those things that we're looking to do, revitalize strategic location, real grade assistance to the attraction of co-tenants, and it does satisfy the performance measurements for a performance-based grant. Urban Outfitters is an international retailer, but they're headquartered in Philadelphia. This is a really great story. They also own Anthropology, Free People, Terrain, and a couple of other brands. Obviously, Urban Outfitters has the opportunity to co-locate stores just like this in markets that they come into. They target adults 18 to 30. When you think about it, we have 45,000 students within three miles of this location, 14,000 right on campus, right next door, literally across the street, literally right next door at the Downtown Norfolk TCC campus. And it's a, it's a terrific target opportunity in their demographic. And again, there's only 176 Urban Outfitters stores in North America and Europe. It's kind of a rendering of kind of the floor plan of what will be a three-story Urban Outfitters store, 13,806 square feet, over three levels. Generally speaking, their profile is two-story, med dining-type stores. In this case, it will be a little bit more unique than even a few of their other locations in other communities. This is kind of a rendering of what the facade would look like, a very cool reuse of the AA Adams Building and a very retro-yet-urban-style presence on the street. I think we're okay with that. Obviously, I think we've talked a little bit about this, but it is important to note that there is going to be a facade improvement grant through the Downtown Norfolk Council that will help that important historic structure. Obviously, it's a terrific reuse of a great old building, capitalizing on retail-oriented economic development in the heart of Granby Street. There's very strategic areas. We can't get a more strategic location than the center of Granby Street, looking out again from that opening at the entrance to MacArthur Center and that cross-pollinization that's going to occur there. Obviously, a signature regional retail store. Pedestrian traffic, parking revenues, all that alone is, is going to be just a terrific number. Urban Outfitters, good rendering of it, and here's what you would see. If you look out the front entrance, you see AA Adams Building for those not familiar with it. And it's a, it's a terrific building that has AA Adams literally at the top. You can see the location here, College Place, Monticello Office Building, the Tywater Community College Campus. Performance-based grant structures, this is how we do these. It's based on incremental revenues generated by the project. And what that means is, in large measure, it's what the sales performance of the store will be. There's a couple other smaller things that we, we throw into that mix. But generally speaking, we're thinking that for our illustrative purposes, the store does $4 million a year. It's incremental new revenues. Taxing off of that, it's about $86,000 a year that comes into the city's coffers. The performance grant is paid in arrears after we verify that they have done what they said they would do in that given year. The right companies in 265 LLC had to verify in writing that they had the ability to perform under this, the terms and conditions we were looking for, that it was for the sole and express use of Urban Outfitters, and that there's an estimated $2 million being put into this by 265 Granby and through the Urban Outfitters agreement to fund their own build-out at about $1.5 million. Payments are made in arrears, and that just means that after we get the money and confirm that it's in, we have the ability to grant back through our Economic Development Authority based on that performance, a certain percentage of that new money that we've received. And in this case, what we plan on doing is, what we're projecting to do, is 70% of the incremental revenue that we would receive goes to 265 Granby in order to attract this signature retailer. 30% we keep. There's a total, there's a 15-year lifeline at the maximum point for this grant, and there is an aggregate, or until the aggregate grant cap is achieved. And that works both ways. If at the end of 15 years, they don't achieve what we've set as the aggregate amount, they don't get it. Here's how that works. We're estimating that we would make $85,374 based on the incremental revenues that we can verify into the city. Once we verify that amount is in there, we can then authorize through the Economic Development Authority that the grant payment is eligible to be made in the next fiscal year. So in July the 1st, they would receive 70% of that number, which is $58,667. We keep $26,707 for ourselves, and that's the equivalent of the 70-30 split that we're talking about. Here's the maximum amount that is eligible to be earned over that 15 years, $880,000. We're going to net, or we're going to make, $1.3 million in total. But again, in the sharing arrangement that we've had, that means that we net about $400,000 up to that amount. Everything after that is ours.
Chuck, can you go back because I think so I'm critical with you.
Sure.
You need to let folk know that it comes from sales tax.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Sales tax, by and large, the largest part of that, but there is business personal property and incremental real estate tax. Putting all those three things together, that forms the incremental revenue that we receive that totals to, in this illustration, $85,374. Thank you. So, the indirect benefits. We're going to really facilitate the economic renewal of retail stores on Granby Street. It's the first national retailer on Granby Street. Name recognition, attracting a new population of shoppers to downtown. It's the first and only store in Hampton Roads. Imagine the parking revenues. Pedestrian traffic increasing. The anchor to other retailers on Granby Street. The strong draw with the national reputation. The retail business is called co-tenancy. Everybody wants to be where Walmart is. Everybody wants to be where national, where national retailers locate. Everybody wants to be around an Urban Outfitters. And it furthers the market development, and this is one that we really are beginning to get some real traction on here in Norfolk, and we're really proud that we have a growing creative class downtown. Young people that are setting up small entrepreneur businesses. They love this kind of stuff, and it helps them make the case as they are beginning to set up their businesses, what a cool place and what a vibrant community that we have in downtown. And we're thinking that we'll get some indirect benefit as a result of that as well. DNC, our partners, have come to the table in the form of financial support with $35,000 loan to Bobby, I'm sorry, to 265 Granby. There's a $10,000 facade improvement grant and a $10,000 catalyst grant in the second year of operations. And that is our partnership with Downtown Norfolk Council, who in addition to doing the financial support, have been instrumental in helping us shape this project together and getting the advice and the real handholding that's kind of gone into this project. Here is an example of an Urban Outfitters grant payback scenario. And again, if you think about what we're talking about, in this case, we're showing a grant payment made in year two. You have to be in operation one full calendar year, so you verify that $84,819 is in our coffers. 70% ratio means that that grant payment is going to make to grantee, which is 265 Granby, $59,373. We keep $25,446. And then there's the payout. And again, what it shows here is that in a total incremental revenue over this scenario of 15 years, 1.28 is what the whole revenue would be. The grantee was eligible for up to $880, and we have $460,000, $406,099 direct city benefit, not taking into account all those other things that this opportunity brings us. Thank, oh, here's some examples of our performance-based grant history, used very selectively. We don't do it all the time. It has to have those five criteria that we talked about. But here's where, in chronological order, from the latest to the earliest, where we've used these. And again, some of them have closed out. Back in 1999, we did bring Jack Quinn's Irish Pub into downtown Norfolk using a $217,000 performance-based grant. Anybody who's around long enough to know, there was nothing down here on Granby Street at that time. It really was the catalyst for those kinds of restaurants and pubs to get onto Granby Street and begin what had been the first phase of what now we want to move toward with the Urban Outfitters opportunity. Glad to answer questions. Are we good?
Mr. Manager, maybe this would be a good point for you to explain to the public how this is coming, how we got to this point this evening, and why we're being asked to run it tonight.
Right. Mr. Mayor and council, there have been discussions about having an Urban Outfitters here in Norfolk for some time, but it was just to add some discussions. Late Friday evening, the discussions heated up, and in order for this opportunity to, to be here, there needed to be a closing of a gap, and that was where the performance-based grant comes in. The performance-based grant will again facilitate this opportunity, and as we started to go through this, this weekend, basically, we still didn't have something in hand that would suggest that it's more than just a discussion. We worked through the weekend at about 10:30 this morning. For the first time, we did receive something that indicated that based on the council's approval of this performance-based grant, the lease could be signed, and then there would be the opportunity to have Urban Outfitters here. They're pretty aggressive in wanting to have control of the building as early as the 4th of January. As you know, this is the last meeting that we have. Even if we had a special meeting next week, it still would potentially not result in Even if we had a special meeting next week, it still would potentially not result in the time schedule that Urban Outfitters needed. So right now, what the administration is presenting with use this opportunity to bring this international retailer here to Granby Street, but again, in terms of requesting that there be a walk-on tonight, it was really a conversation that started late on Friday, that we got a great deal of clarity about 10:30, and now we're ready to proceed to less than ask.
And with that, I might also, I think we failed to note that Urban Outfitters would like to open the store in June of this coming year, June of 2012, and that's what's kind of driving the need to...
Any questions from any member of Council? Chuck, that was an excellent presentation. Mr. Manager, anything else? Any questions from anybody?
Well, I think that, you know, we need to be cognizant of Waterside, where we're going to ultimately go with that, and I know that if we look at our quarters, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything against this per se, but I do think we need to understand, we have them all, we have Granby Street, we need to see if this is our vision, and I appreciate it and do support the vision of retail in Granby, that we need to understand where retail will fit in its place at Waterside, I guess, once these RFPs are in, and then we begin, or you begin making decisions to bring to us for approval. So I think you need to keep that, somehow keep that balance in the, you know, somehow in the equation of where we are.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
So just don't forget where we're going to be come very early in the new year with Waterside, the RFPs.
I will say, having spoken to the folks at Toddman today, they see the commitment of Urban Outfitters to Granby Street as a compliment to the MacArthur Center. I think that's a pretty enlightened view on their part. We were very concerned many years ago, when the MacArthur Center opened, the impact it was going to have on Waterside, and we really moved away from a retail establishment there, but maintaining that balance, you know, is going to be very difficult, it's going to be important for us to keep it on our...
But we need to see what the RFPs bring us, yes. So that's the only reason I mention it. I know that we've discussed a lot today. A lot of us have been talking since probably, what, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock today on this topic, but that was, it just struck me that that is one piece of the equation we really haven't talked about, and I think Marcus should need to really be prepared to, and I think it may enhance Waterside ultimately, once the RFPs do come in, and enhance whoever we bring in and the type of tenants that come into Waterside, but we need to not forget it, and I know we haven't mentioned it today in probably the last four and a half hours.
I want to thank the manager, the city attorney, Chuck, and folks at Economic Development, Darryl, for moving, I mean, being nimble enough to get this matter to us in a time where we can assist in hopefully having a lease signed that will bring Urban Outfitters here. It's very unusual for us to act on something like this at this short notice, but also without, you know, a full opportunity to advertise the ordinance in light of the fact that we won't meet again until January the 10th, and in fact, we're told that Urban Outfitters would like to have control of the building by early January before we meet again. I think it's appropriate that we act tonight. I think it's, what's being asked of the community of the city is relatively modest in light of the potential upside for us, and so I'm just, you know, I appreciate the fact that you got us to this point.
And also, just so we don't forget, we've been in committee at least since 2 o'clock today, and there was quite a bit of discussion that occurred, at least initially from three of, seven of us that are here today, so, and then we did go into the closed meeting, so we did have probably more discussion, frankly, I would say probably more discussion than we would normally have, just because we had committee first, that we had the opportunity to vet with questions from three of us, including some senior staffers. So, though it may appear as if it's a quick walk-on, it is, however, the amount of time that's gone into vetting this particular issue has been fairly substantial, even though it may not have been all of us at one time, it has been substantial to get down to that particular brief to Chuck Gay. In fact, that was the third time I've heard it today. I know some of us have heard it twice.
I also would like to mention that DNC support is really invaluable, and, you know, we've been working for several years on street-level diversity, and we've had some committees that have done a lot of legwork and hard work to try to draw in just exactly the kind of project that we've hopefully succeeded with today, so I would really like to thank their support.
It really does have the potential to change the face of Granby Street, to some extent of the downtown, so I know that the folks over at DNC have been working in this...
A couple of years ago.
Years, but, you know, really fairly intensively for months, and, you know, it's the first time in my experience that a business organization has actually, you know, gone so far as to put their own money forward to make something happen that tells us what the retailers in downtown or the commercial interests in downtown really think about getting this tenant here, so that's a good sign as well. Okay. All right, thank you. I think it's been well said. Thank you. All right, Marcus, do you want to go to the audit, or what would you like to do?
Well, I think we do precinct consolidations and then go to the audit after that.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll take a stretch. I've been editing since too.
Hi, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elisa Long. I'm with the Office of Elections. Mayor Frame and members of City Council, on behalf of the Norfolk Electoral Board, I will be presenting the board's consolidation recommendations for eight precincts and for two permanent polling place relocations. Our board members, we have two of our board members. Our chairman, James Hinshaw, had to leave for another appointment, but our vice chairman, Dan Hayworth, is with us, and our secretary, Donald Brown, is with us tonight. We delayed the presentation of this in hopes that we would be able to take into consideration the new congressional districts before bringing this to you. However, the General Assembly didn't exactly cooperate with us. It looks as if we will have an unprecedented end to the 2011 year by no congressional districts being drawn. The proposal that we'll present tonight will only contain changes that would not be impacted by either of the congressional district plans that are before the General Assembly Committee. Because of time that's involved in making changes, we feel that we need to move forward as quickly as possible. There are several incentives for consolidation, and one would be to improve the operational efficiency and offset some of the increases, the increased cost of administering elections by reducing the total number of precincts. Since most of our elections are low to moderate turnout, our records show that the most efficient operation and use of equipment comes within our larger precincts. Although we have a wonderful working relationship with our privately-owned polling places, and we appreciate the valuable service that they provide to the citizens of Norfolk, whenever possible, we recommend complying with Virginia Election Law Section 24.2310 that says each polling place shall be located in a public building whenever practical. This would allow us to invest the tax dollars required for ADA compliance in publicly-owned building when possible. Each of these is an important incentive, though perhaps not a compelling reason to consider consolidation, there is a compelling reason that lies in our need to increase the ratio of voting equipment to registered voters and provide electronic voting equipment for absentee balloting in the 2012 presidential election. Having stated our compelling need, we find ourselves in a voting equipment catch-22. We are left to weigh our need for additional electronic voting equipment in 2012 against our options available to provide that equipment. It would be very nice if we could just go out and purchase equipment, the equipment that we need. Unfortunately, we cannot. Virginia Election Law Section 24.2626, which was enacted in 2007, states that no locality can buy electronic voting equipment. In a 2008 Attorney General opinion, the law was clarified. According to the Attorney General, local boards can no longer purchase, borrow, or lease electronic voting equipment, except in a very narrow situation when the voting equipment is in the 30-day lockdown period after an election. Under current Virginia law, the only system available for purchase in Virginia uses paper ballots. For those of us in the election administration and for the citizens who love our electronic system and which, incidentally, still has years of quality service left in its lifespan, this leaves us in a predicament. What are our options for increasing our voting equipment inventory? We can reallocate our current inventory of voting equipment by consolidating precincts, or we can purchase a new paper ballot voting system. Now Norfolk is very fortunate in that our rate of growth this decade and the expected voter registration surge before the presidential election does not exceed our ability to reallocate. One of our neighboring cities has not been as fortunate as we've been and has just purchased a new paper ballot system. For Norfolk, a similar purchase would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 to $1.2 million. Add to this, would be, added to this would be the cost of ongoing purchase of expensive card stock paper ballots for each election at the cost of about 72 cents a piece. This could add, for a presidential election, an extra $100,000 to the cost of a presidential What we want to gain, what can we gain from the use of consolidation? We could gain five polling places that would be relocated to city-owned facilities, and we would gain 25 units that would be available for reallocation. This would be the minimum that we need for the presidential election. A great deal of thought and planning has gone into the recommendations that we will make. Change is never easy, and these are certainly not easy choices. In choosing the precincts to recommend for consolidation, we tried to choose precincts that were compatible and would cause the least confusion for the voters.
Elisa, a question. In the previous slide where you talked about buying, not being able to buy new electronic equipment, but then being able to purchase a new paper ballot voting system, bought a paper ballot voting system, are you saying that we wouldn't do, we wouldn't use the electronic system at all?
That's right. That's right. We've got your paper ballot. Yeah, we wouldn't have a dual system.
When we went to the electronics system, we had to buy that system. That's what basically told us, that's where we had to go to get it right. I remember, because I was on the board at that time.
So what do you say, what is the rationale behind not allowing us to purchase additional electronic equipment?
Yeah, that's, the General Assembly passed that law in 2007, and you cannot add to what you have. We can continue to use what we have for the life of the equipment, and we have a 20-year, we had a 20-year maintenance agreement, so we can use this until 2022.
Right, but just so it's understood, we bought those in, what, 1999, 2000?
No, 2002.
2002. All right, I was, I think I was the secretary of the board at that time in Norfolk. We were told that was the system that we had to purchase, or that was the, an approved system to get away from the paper ballot because of what occurred in Florida, am I right?
Well, because punch card was what occurred in Florida.
Exactly.
And we had punch cards.
And we had punch cards, so we had to get away from paper or punch card. We had to purchase the electronic system, because that's what was, the state told us we had to purchase. Now, within what, five years, seven years post that, 2007, they make the amendment saying that we can't use the electronic system any longer.
That's correct.
Seems like it's taken us back.
Well, why can't the state give us the money to make the purchases if need be?
Why can't we continue to use the electronic system that we have?
We can.
We can't.
No, we can, but we just can't add to it.
We can't add to it.
We can't ever add to it.
Once they start going down, we're done.
So, so why not, you know, after this 2012 election, so we won't have to worry about hanging chads and any other things of that nature, why don't we just use it in this? I mean, because I'm concerned. Voter suppression and things that are doing in other states, you know, when we met a couple of weeks ago at the airport, I asked you, were there anything going on in Virginia that would, you know, equate to voter suppression? So to come out and say, you know, just before probably the, next to the biggest presidential election ever, that we're going to do things like consolidate voting precincts possibly and go back to the paper ballot, that's not...
No, what we're saying is to keep from going back to a paper ballot system. If we reallocate and we have enough equipment to comfortably conduct the election, we would not have to go to a paper system.
And Paul, what we're also saying is that we can't add anything to the electronic equipment, so...
I wouldn't worry about it until after the '12 election.
Well, let me, let me answer your question. How many machines have we lost since we made the purchase?
None.
None. They're all working perfectly fine.
But there's just not enough under, with all of the current voting, polling precincts that we have currently, there's not enough.
We're stretched to be at a comfortable level that we need to be for a presidential election.
And you've learned that because of the last presidential election?
That's correct.
Yeah, that there were some long lines and we couldn't handle it. Right. All the people was coming in.
But the voters were very patient.
Yes, they were.
And so I'm just, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that these laws have something, some hidden agenda, and if it, if I had to weigh in on it, I would say that we keep our electronic voting...
Well, we very much want to keep that.
But what's the issue there?
The issue is having enough vote of the electronic equipment to comfortably conduct the presidential election without being able to buy more. If we could go out and buy more, there would be no problem.
Well, I mean, we did it, we did it in eight.
We have, we're going to be at a larger voter registration population than we wanted to be.
And so instead of running into issues like we did in Florida in the Bush-Goy election, I think we just need to let our voters be prepared to stand in lines like they did the last time, because you're changing horses in the middle of the street, and I just don't trust you.
Kind of pray for good weather, too.
No, people stood out in the rain.
Yeah, they stood out in the rain. I don't trust pray for...
At 5:00 in the morning, they were in the rain.
I know, but you pray for good weather.
One of the other things that we do not have, we had in 2008, we had lines 500, 600 a day waiting to cast ballots. Because we did not have enough voting equipment to do absentee balloting on electronic equipment, we had to do all those ballots by paper ballot, and what we're trying to do now is reallocate. So one of the things that we can do is not only make the precincts more comfortable, but to also gain enough voting equipment. We have, the Treasurer's Office has made available to us their vacant office on the first floor for an absentee precinct, so we can set up an absentee precinct there with voting equipment that would operate more like a precinct, and then on election day, our absentee precinct would not have thousands and thousands and thousands more paper ballots to count, because those people would have voted on voting equipment. But in order to be able to do that, we have to be able to have a little extra leeway in the voting equipment.
How early, how early can, can you legally start voting absentee?
45 days.
45 days.
45 days, and we can do that in that office as any other precinct would operate in...
So voter education, if we start talking about that, you know, with voter education, if the voter were more educated, realizing that they had a window that began 45 days before the election.
And you meet the criteria.
Right.
Right, there is, they do have to meet the criteria for casting an absentee ballot, but that can begin as early as 45 days. What we have, and I will move quickly through this, I know you're on a real time restraint, and you may want to look at these and study them. What we've done is to give you a kind of an overview with the poll location name, the precinct name, our suggestion for the precinct name, a before and after map to show you what the precinct would look like, restructure... what the precinct would look like restructured. And at the bottom of this, you will see that there's information giving you the districts, ward, super ward, house, senate, and congressional for each one of the recommended consolidations and the registered voters and then the active registered voters. And that active registered voter number is very important because the people who are inactive have been identified as possibly not, no longer living in that, in that precinct. So that active number is the one that we're really looking at. And then just to give you an idea of the size of this, the number of people that cast a ballot in the precincts in 2008. The first one would be to combine Emanuel and Lambert's Point precinct. The location would be the Lambert's Point Community Center, which is a beautiful facility, would be perfect for a polling place. The precinct name would be Lambert's Point. And as you can see from the chart, those totally match up on all the precincts, I mean, all the districts totally match on those two precincts, so they can combine and very comfortably.
Where's Emanuel President located?
On Colley Avenue.
We're on Colley Avenue. Small little church nearby.
Emanuel President.
By O'Sullivan.
By O'Sullivan.
Or you can almost, you miss it almost as you drive.
Tiny parking lot.
And then, so they would, that would be within what, what mile radius to the president location in Lambert's Point?
Well, within, to the Lambert's Point, current Lambert's Point precinct, it's a mile.
No, not I'm talking Emanuel. If Emanuel were combined at the center, how far would that be?
Probably a mile, a mile maybe.
Wasn't Emanuel actually out, it was outside of the precinct?
It is outside, yes, it does.
It wasn't even in it?
It lies in, actually in the Larchmont Rec precinct. So it is outside, so it would be about a mile from, from where it is today, I would guess. I don't know, we did not figure that.
It looks like a matter of blocks.
Pardon?
Blocks.
Yeah. Okay, the next, the next recommendation is for Norview Methodist and Norview Middle School. The middle school would be our choice of locations because it is a very nice facility that can handle the larger precinct. The name we would recommend to be Norwood, Norview. The Norview Methodist and Norview Middle School both match up so far as the districts are concerned. It would be a larger precinct, but we feel that that could be accommodated. The next would be to combine Titus Town and Tucker House precincts. Poll location would be in the Titus Town Recreation Center. The precinct name would be Titus Town.
And you only have two precincts now? It's true.
Three.
I think I have three precincts, right?
You might be able to cover all three. You could just go.
I just run from running.
I'm here again.
Currently, Titus Town is a split precinct. It would remain a split precinct. We wouldn't solve that problem, but it doesn't, doesn't create any kind of problem. Other than that, the districts match up except for congressional and on the congressional plans that are out there, the two congressional plans, that one would match up.
Listen, most of the people who live at Tucker House, except for, I think there's like five houses that are part of that precinct, except for the building, they probably will all qualify for absentee ballot. So will we make a big push in there to make sure that those people are aware that they can vote absentee?
Yes.
That would take care of that issue.
The next would be to combine Lafayette Library and Willard Precinct with Willard Model School at Lakewood as the polling place and the name would remain, would be Willard. Before and after shows you the, the construction of that. This is also one that is currently, Willard is currently split between the senate, fifth and sixth districts. It would remain that way, but all the other districts match up with that. Next would be Sherwood School and Sherwood Recreation Center. The Sherwood Forest Community Center would be our choice of the polling location and the name would, we would recommend would be Sherwood. This, if you look at the districts on this one, there is a perfect match between the two. They are, as a matter of fact, the Sherwood School sits right in front of the Sherwood Rec Center, so they're very, very close.
Well, Willard and Lafayette Library were basically sharing the same parking.
Right, that's exactly right. Okay. Next, we would recommend Hunt and Y and Young Park precinct. This, once again, is a perfect match. All of the districts on this particular combination are a perfect match.
But go back to that one. To the, to the, that one. While that's a perfect match, you're still talking about maybe a mile and a half, two miles from, from, from the Hunt and Y to Young Park. And it's, it's very important that, that, that this information gets out right away. When we first went to the ward system, voters who voted at Young Park, who lived in Calvert Park, who voted Young Park Elementary School, were changed to Brambleton and that suppressed the voter turnout. I think it was done purposely because of the ward system, because that's naturally, you know, when it happened. So my only thing is that if this is going to occur, it needs to be, you know, the voters need to know immediately that this, this is going to occur.
Also, listen, a lot of the voters here walk to their polling place, which these polling places at Young Park and Hunt and Y MCA are unique to other places within the city. And I don't know if that really is considering the amount of families that do walk to vote in those areas, that that would be.
Does that have to change?
No, does not.
It does not have to change?
No, this is, this is, we can keep them all the same.
If I remember a lot.
But I would, I question that.
Okay.
We'll think, we'll talk some more about that.
We did, I mean, the voter turnout in November 2011 was 40 people in, in Hunt and Y.
Was that all?
Yeah. It is notoriously.
Yeah, that was, but when was it?
This past election.
Okay, but what about the presidential election?
It's right there.
Okay. See, see, don't, don't talk about a local election.
Yes.
So don't use that as your baron. We're into, you know, the presidential election is what should be the voter, what we're dealing with right now should be based on.
Right.
You know, I, you know, in six, only, only 40 people voted in Tidewater Park. But we're not talking about, we're talking about the presidential election and that's what we should base what we do on, the presidential election. It's very important. It's very important. And with this presidential election and me not trusting things that happen, I, this is one that I would question. I think we probably need to let this sit still for a minute. And that's just me.
Okay, the next combination would be one that the two precincts are currently co-located in the Larchmont Recreation Center. And what we are recommending is just to make them one precinct. They're already in the same building, we just have a line separating the two precincts. They are, they do have a different house district between Old Dominion and 79 and Larchmont Rec is 89, so this does create a split. However, we do have a poll book system that allows us to manage splits far more comfortably than we have in, in the past. We've, we have been divided for the last decade and we have, we have learned to manage split precincts fairly well. So creating this is a trade-off between getting the voting equipment and dealing with a split precinct every two years. So this would be our recommending, recommendation to go ahead and make them one precinct. Now, this Ballantyne and Coleman Place is one that came on our radar screen fairly late when we found out that Ballantyne School had been closed by the school system and was, was a vacant building. So what we did is to start looking around within the Ballantyne precinct. Ballantyne actually, the, the school actually is in Bowling Park precinct, so there was never a building in Ballantyne, a public building, that could house the precinct. So the, the precinct polling place went to Bowling, to, into the Bowling Park precinct. What we're recommending.
So church on Ballantyne going down, going north.
Trinity.
Is it Trinity?
I think it's Trinity.
Right. I think that church should be invested, that'd be a lot closer than trying to get the Ballantyne residents to go to Bowling Park. And I think it's accessible and I don't think you'd have to spend this money to make that place accessible.
Okay, we can take a look at that.
Yeah. And when you get back to us, I mean, in, hearing our concern, you won't just go on and just say, well, okay.
No, 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 we have to vote to change.
Okay. Yeah, this, this is one that I think you should look at Trinity Church. It's already accessible in terms of ADA requirements.
We have, we have, our preference is to not go into a private.
But in, in a lot of instances, your preference might not be acceptable.
We have two permanent relocations. We are asking for the Bayview School to be changed to the Bayview Recreation Center and this is simply because that is a much better place for a polling place. It is adjacent to the Bayview Elementary School and it's well-suited. It has adequate space, a drop-off area, accessible parking spaces and off-street parking, so it has all the things that we're looking for in a, in a polling place.
The last one would be to, to ask for a permanent relocation of the Stewart Polling Place to the Virginia Zoo. Stewart, as you know, is a vacant building that is no longer to be acceptable as a polling place and there are no other public buildings in Stewart. The zoo is being recommended because it has adequate space, parking, a separate entrance, and it borders, the zoo property borders the Stewart precinct line. We have eight, even though it's not in the Stewart precinct, we have eight other polling places that aren't in the precincts that, that they represent, so that would not be an unusual thing. This plan has been reviewed with the Virginia Zoo Director. He's in, he's open to the zoo serving as a polling location. However, he has expressed concern about the revenue loss in the room rental and the possibility of parking issues should the zoo host field trips on Election Day. Any questions?
Obviously, this is something near and dear to our hearts, okay? It doesn't have just to do with the administration of the system, but we want to make sure all of our citizens have the same, same opportunity to get to the polling place. And it may make your job a little difficult. Seems like, seems to me like we have some issues surrounding three, four precincts and we'll catch us and talk about that. We're not going to act on any of that tonight. We are going to act on the Stewart School piece, is that right? And. Crossroads. And crossroads, which are pretty straightforward, so.
But they would be, the vote is only till the end of next year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, those are temporary.
Just September. Okay, we're required to come back to change it then, if there is an improvement. Okay, we've got to go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.